Recording in progress.
Hi, everyone. Welcome to our city council study session for January seventeen. Glad to have you all here today. We have a couple of very interesting topics related to public safety and transformational change. We are looking at university, so I will turn it over to Administrator Zelms to start us off.
Thank you, Council President, council members, members of the public. We have a few members of the public here today at the study session. It's sort of exciting. Um, so we're gonna kick off with the updated public safety aid recommendation. I, as we get ready to rock on the PowerPoint, I'm not exactly sure if we're there. So if we are, I'm happy to go to the next slide. Um, if we aren't, okay. So, um, we had come a very briefly during the end of your budget conversation to talk about the fact that we would have access to about five point three million dollars of one-time public safety money that was allocated in the last legislative session. Um, there are a number of eligible uses. I'm just gonna kind of set the stage here and then turn it over to Chief Franklin, Chief Karstaa, and City Attorney Spender Craig. Um, but we all came together a few times after that initial very high-level recommendation. Um, and looking at the eligible uses and the ineligible uses, and this is a really important slide because it's not allowed to be used for everything. The money came with a little bit of, uh, narrow lanes or, um, what is available for. So we're really focusing in the eligible uses space. Um, I don't actually think we had a lot of interest in things in eligible uses space. Um, we never even talked about that. So, uh, I think helpful to be able to, um, say that our public safety team is really was already more focused into the eligible uses space. But again, this is one-time money. It would be wonderful if it was reauthorized at some point in the future. But we went in assuming that, um, if there was longer-term desire out of the, um, things that came forward, that that would need to be coming from, um, the tax levy, and we know that that is something we need to be balanced in. So, um, eligible uses is what you will be seeing in the recommendation. And, um, you can see, this isn't the entire five point three million, but it's, it comes much closer. Um, so it's about, uh, it, there's about eight hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars left to continue to look at and talk through, um, which sounds like a lot, but not when you're talking about public safety. Um, so, uh, there's really an portion that to continue to do some work in the victim services and kind of catching up with piece load in the city attorney's space. Um, some equipment and, um, and fire truck replacements in fire. And then similarly, um, trying a different response in police and, um, doing some of the local matches for the COPS grant that we were, um, awarded and starting that early, as well as fleet reconciliation of vehicles that, um, didn't make it into the budget despite the increase in tax levy that you did. So with that, I would just turn it over to, um, the public safety team and, um, write a little bit more detail on what's in the package.
Thank you, City Administrator Zelms. Madam President, council members, I do get to, um, address you first. Um, as you have seen through the slides for the City Attorney's Office, we are proposing an allocation of four hundred thousand dollars of the five point three million that is distributed over the years twenty-four and twenty-five. And it really falls into two primary buckets, as, as you've seen, both related to staffing. And let me address the, the first one, the, um, continued support of an attorney one position, an attorney one position in my office is really a line prosecutor, ninety percent committed to day-to-day prosecution responsibilities in the court system. Um, as some of you are aware, just taking a little step back, about eight months ago, we made a move in my office to better support the criminal division. Uh, specifically, we decided to utilize the vacant civil deputy position to support the criminal side um, and hired a temporary attorney one aligned prosecutor at that point. The primary focus, the reason for that move was to ensure public safety, to better support increased training needs for RPD. Continuing to address the increased court activities related to the pandemic. You may recall some discussion about the court system finally getting back to their pre-pandemic court calendar that started in July of twenty-three. And, uh, there was a need to provide some relief for the criminal deputies so that they weren't carrying such a significant caseload day-to-day and spend more time collaborating with, uh, justice partners. Um, that plan over the last eight months has largely worked quite well. Um, but we are at a point where we can really no longer utilize the civil side resources to supplement the criminal side needs. Um, we are looking to fill the civil deputy position. That's likely happening within the next month or so. Uh, but in the meantime, the criminal side needs have really not abated, and that's what this first category is designed to, to supplement. Uh, the public safety funds would continue, um, would, would support the continued work of a criminal prosecutor. Criminal workload is not getting any lighter for us. The backlog pandemic-related efforts continue. Heavy focus on DWI prosecution, domestic prosecution, other important quality-of-life crimes that you see pop up before the council here and there. That portion of the funding should carry us through twenty-four, um, and twenty-five uh, with anticipated, um, evaluation of FTE needs going into twenty-twenty-six. The second category presented to you, um, relates to a victim liaison position. Approximately six years ago, uh, my office had applied for a grant, um, a VOCA grant to better assist, uh, crime victims. And to assure that we were meeting our statutory obligations, part of that grant process, as you see now and then, um, did involve a commitment, um, by council, a formal commitment, voted, approved process, that, um, we would fund that position if and when that grant went away. We've been able to maintain that grant for a significant period of time. But at this point, it runs through the end of September twenty-twenty-four. We need to be planning to continue that position, uh, through the remainder of twenty-four and into twenty-five. And again, focused on twenty-twenty-six potentially for maintaining that FTE, uh, going forward. Um, I think many of you are familiar with the important work of, uh, the victim liaison position, uh, within our office. Very focused on supporting, um, domestic abuse victims in particular, um, but then a broad spectrum of crime victims, uh, as well, uh, going forward. Um, last thing I would say relative to this, um, broader, um, proposal to you today, I won't comment specifically on the, on the funding items for police and fire, but I do want to talk a little bit about the process. Um, I really appreciated the significant, uh, discussion, uh, the deliberation, the weighing of pros and cons. Um, this was a significant amount of money from the legislature. Um, and I suggest to you that the proposal before you is, is using those funds wisely. Not everyone getting everything that they wanted. Really appreciated the collaborative work between the chiefs. Um, admin sorting through priorities, and I think at the end of the day, reflecting not only the department priorities for police and fire in my office, but I think the council's priorities as well. Thank you. I think I'll hand it over to, uh, Chief Karstaa.
Thank you, Michael. City Council President, City Council. The first item on the list for fire that we're asking for is, is, uh, some DEI professional training for supervisors. We have not been able to, uh, participate in the city training that Chow put together, uh, only limited because of our shift schedule. We've got three twenty-four-hour shifts. And it's, it's real complex, what days they work, what days they don't work, et cetera, et cetera, overtime costs, compelling people to come in on their days off. We really need something that we can get all of our supervisors for. So I worked with Chow. We found quality instructor. We found quality curriculum, and we're excited about it. But, but that's, this is the only way to get it to all of our supervisors because of the shift schedule. The next, uh, item is our SCBA's, the, that we use to breathe and smoke, uh, virtually every, every day. Um, they're getting old. Um, we maintain our own systems. We fix our own systems. As they get older, our repair costs go up. Uh, we also have an issue countywide. I've been seeking, uh, we've been making big strides in mutual aid with the other county fire departments. We're working together more closely than ever before. We operate on emergency scenes, uh, more than we have in the past. We train together. But every department has a different SCBA system so that we can't exchange bottles. We can't fill their bottles. They can't fill ours. And so we're asked, we're gonna be applying for a SCBA federal grant um, countywide to try to achieve interoperability. If successful, this would get new SCBA's for Rochester and for every other county fire department, and we would be able to interchange parts, pieces, uh, when we work together. So, yeah, if successful, it would cost the city ninety-five thousand dollars roughly for a match, um, in order to get. But this would be a two-million-dollar grant if it's successful. Next. Turnout gear, turnout gear has gone up in price significantly in the last four years. Um, we used to be able to buy a set of turnout gear for two thousand dollars, pants and coat, and now it's thirty-seven-hundred dollars a set. Um, OSHA mandates that it's a ten-year lifecycle. It has to replace it ten years, so it gets very expensive. In a typical career, a firefighter will go through five sets of PPE in their, in their typical career. So it's not a cheap piece of equipment. That's just the can't pants and a coat. We're not talking, we have boots, hoods, gloves, helmets. Um, so our current budget, um, is not able to purchase the additional gear. So our budget would have to go up by this amount in order to keep less than ten-year-old gear for firefighters. This is an opportunity for us to catch up, if you will, um, with the sudden, uh, price increases that we've experienced to maintain gear that's ten years older or less. Similar, similar with the fire truck. Fire trucks have gone up significantly in cost. They also have long build times. Um, right now, if we ordered a fire engine today, it would take four years, um, from, from signing the contract until the truck is delivered. Uh, we currently have four reserve engines that we use all the time. When a, when a vehicle has to be taken out for service, we, we use a, a reserve engine in its place. When a vehicle, a frontline breaks down, we, we use the reserve engines. When we do emergency callbacks, which we do quite often, uh, yesterday, we had to do emergency callbacks with the apartment fire with the extreme cold weather. Um, those people, those off-duty firefighters that come in, they, we put them on a reserve fire engine to respond. Those were, those four reserve engines were, uh, purchased in nineteen ninety-six. They're approaching thirty years old. They're still running. Got a great, uh, maintenance system. We, we keep them on the road. But, um, they're thirty years old, so, so we need to start getting some of our frontline and reserve SAS to keep that rotation going. Uh, with the pressure on the Equipment Revolving Fund, here's an opportunity to, to buy something we need without putting stress on the Equipment Revolving Fund.
And if I may just, um, add that you will be seeing this and it will, your agenda for Monday will be coming out during this meeting, and it will include, um, the request to purchase this, uh, fire vehicle before you approve all of this because of some of the timing in the window on the pricing from twenty-twenty-three, that, that the chief was able to carry over. So just want to make you aware that will be on your agenda in a very short period of time.
Just to build on that, uh, briefly, the, the manufacturer is offering a, a good price that expires on the first of February. So we either get it in front of you sooner than, or we, or the price goes up. And pending your questions, that is all that I have, and I'll pass over to Chief Franklin.
Good afternoon, Council President, Council Members, City Administrators, Zelms. Thank you for this opportunity. Uh, first request, uh, from RPD is, uh, reflective of kind of multiple discussions with OCJC and our community and, uh, and county partners. Uh, kind of trying to create a pilot project, what I envision to be a one-to-two-year pilot project. Uh, really, really trying to wrap our arms around, uh, homeless outreach efforts and driving people to resources. Uh, there's a whole continuum of care within this community, and I think one of our greater needs right now is somebody to be that kind of hub and spoke, if you will, of really kind of identifying those different unique needs that are out there and driving people towards resources. So this would be a civilian, uh, kind of model partnering with law enforcement and obviously attempting to reduce that recidivism of homelessness and the homeless context that we're having out there on a daily basis. Uh, second project would be a camera infrastructure. Uh, we have a very robust camera infrastructure, uh, layout, uh, within this community, within downtown. Uh, but if you take a look at, uh, kind of the DMC infrastructure investments that are gonna be made in the near future, all the growth that we're gonna be experiencing, uh, all the high-density gathering locations, uh, we're looking to expand our camera infrastructure, uh, that we have in place. Uh, obviously, the benefits are prevention and deterrence, enhances investigations. I will also say that we are working internally right now with both Public Works and Transit, trying to identify maybe some of those high-risk, uh, intersection locations. We're also working with parks and seeing, uh, where are your high-risk locations as well. So it's not just a siloed approach on where we think we need cameras, but it is really more of a city kind of, hey, where do we collectively believe that we need more camera infrastructure in the city? After discussions, uh, with the, the team here, um, and thank you, council, for your approval for the, uh, approval of our COPS grant, which is the hiring of seven police officers, uh, that will ultimately be assigned to support bus rapid transit when that's up and, uh, running. Uh, but there is, uh, a match to that grant, and so we felt in discussions internally here that the most effective way to reduce a sort of tax levy about implement, implications, excuse me, would be to use some of this one-time funding that would get us through, uh, those tails into full operational period for BRT. Um, fleet reconc, uh, reconciliation, obviously, uh, there's only so much money to go around the Equipment Revolving Fund. Rochester Police Department had, uh, some vehicles that were unfunded and didn't meet the threshold, which I completely understand because you do have to make sure that the city's needs are being met as a whole. And so this, uh, funding would help kind of get us our vehicles in the door, uh, and help us right align our fleet. Uh, I will also say, uh, fleet for us in particular, uh, has been significantly challenging with, uh, the Ford strike and the vehicles on back orders. And then, uh, one of the other blind spots that we weren't aware of necessarily is every time Ford, um, redesigns their vehicles, well, the equipment doesn't necessarily transfer from the old squads to the new squads. And so now we're in the, having the, to buy new equipment, et cetera, cages, backseats, and things like that. So, um, that's been somewhat problematic, but the, this funding will help us kind of right align, uh, our fleet and hopefully, uh, get us, uh, in alignment for future fleet needs as well, so. And then the final one is police training. Um, uh, I think I'm very much a proponent of police training. Um, it's one of the core pillars of Twenty-First Century Policing. It's an investment in our police department on the front end. Um, and it's really where we can reduce risk and liability through effective, responsible, and high-quality police training. Uh, topics that we're gonna cover, uh, certainly some DEI stuff, uh, use of force, training, uh, working towards enhancing cultural competency, and certainly leadership training for our teammates, uh, setting those expectations for the supervisors out there, making sure everybody's working with clarity, unity, and alignment out on the street. Um, I don't know that this is my slide, so I'll pass it along to somebody else, but I will echo, uh, the city attorney's statements that I do very much appreciate the fact that we were able to kind of get together and, and determine how we should spend this first kind of, of money. I think it's very wise that we left some on the table for future needs, and, uh, I appreciate that. And I, I think the projects submitted to you today are, are worthwhile.
So I guess I could just maybe take this. You can see this, this adds up to probably more than eight hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars worth of funding. Um, but a number of these could use a little bit more, um, flushing out before we would come forward, so it's possible that something could come forward. Um, let's say it was a eighty-thousand-dollar, um, ask after hopefully, uh, council approves on the first meeting of February, the set of recommendations that are here. Um, and so our thought was that we would continue to look at those and come forward as something emerged as the most important, whether that's all of the funding or whether that is small portions of the funding. It's important for some of these, for the partners in the, in that work to also be committed. Um, so that if, uh, for example, we move forward with the Olmsted County Justice Council, um, dashboard, we need to have, um, not just the city committed, not just the county committed, but the justice system committed to make sure that there really is buy-in for that work. Um, and making sure, for example, if there's recruitment and retention, that we're really thinking about that, uh, from the perspective of something that can work, but also be flexible. Um, recognizing your landscape continues to change, it seems like. Um, we did commit to probably not suggesting canoes. Um, and then, uh, just looking at all of these as, uh, the potential that there is, um, things that will come forward, just like any budget process. And as you're implementing, hopefully, what's recommended, although we are interested in your feedback, um, that there is an, any number of things that would be of interest in, in the list going forward that would be valuable, um, with the remainder of that one-time funding. The only other thing I would add is these are round numbers, so think of them as budget numbers. Um, if something comes forward, for example, the fire truck, that will come forward as a request to, to purchase with a dollar amount. Um, it's likely to be less than the number that's here, but when we get the fire truck, there's also a number of things that come with it that we don't buy with the fire truck. We buy hoses separately from the fire truck, and it's similar to what Chief Franklin was saying about outfitting. Um, so those will, um, come forward or be purchased in accordance with the regular purchasing policies. So if training is two-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand dollars in police, that's what would be spent, and that, then the remainder, um, could be for something more. Um, so we were really looking for those round budget, um, numbers, just like a budget, in order to be able, uh, to have those continue to march forward to actual delivery. So with that, I think maybe the last slide says thank you. They always say thank you. So, that's, and I just want to also just echo appreciation for the collaborative work and getting together a few times to come forward with something that, uh, we could all recommend together.
Absolutely. It's great to see all of you working together, and I'm not sure that any of us have very specific feedback, but I do appreciate that this meeting needs that will help offset some of our other potential property tax increases. And, um, really great to get those vehicles ordered since they take several years to arrive. Hopefully not the same issue with police vehicles, but I know fire is, like, several years out, so, great news. Um, I had just a question, Chief, uh, Franklin. For the homelessness outreach, remind me, is there already a specific organization that you would be working with, or is it that you're hiring individuals? What does, remind me what that model looks like?
So it could look one of two ways. It could look like a contract with a particular person or entity, or it could look, I, I guess, with a person or an entity are the two different menus. No, uh, quite frankly, we're kind of writing this from scratch, if you will. But what I, what I am, would, what I am very confident is, again, there's a whole continuum of care within this community. We just need to start connecting the dots.
Absolutely. And about when are you looking to ma, make that program happen?
Depending on your approval. It started, well, actually, we're already started. We're, we're writing up kind of scope of work, uh, kind of like things that we would like to see as part of this program. We're drafting that now, and we've actually run that past some of our local partners here in that network, yeah.
Wonderful. Other questions? Councilmember Palmer?
Yeah, some clarifying questions. Um, and so, City Administrator, are you telling us that, that all this money then will, will save us on the property tax?
I think what we're saying is that those otherwise might come forward as decision packages in the future.
So we'll see, we'll see property tax decreases because all these items?
That is not what I'm saying. What we're saying is that these are needs in, that have been identified within the departments that either came forward as decision package that were not funded within the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five budget, or that would be coming forward in a future budget request.
So the city attorneys, two people, uh, they are not here, or we're gonna be hiring them? Are they not in our budget currently?
They are not fully funded in the budget without some of the grant coverage.
So if we didn't have this grant, we wouldn't be hiring these people?
You would either be eliminating FTEs or adding that into your baseline budget, which is funded by tax levy. Sir Spender Craig can explain it further, but yes, this is one-time funding that without it would, to continue these programs and services, would require local funding.
If I may, Councilmember, um, Palmer, I, I think that is a, a good example, for example, that, um, the victim liaison position that in theory could end at the end of twenty-four. We otherwise would be having discussions about whether that should be a decision pack for twenty-twenty-five in order to fund that FTE. If this funding goes through, we, we should be able to avoid that decision pack coming before you.
Okay, so under your, under your provide relief for Colonel Deputy, you have, um, collaborate with justice partners. Who's your justice partners you're collaborating with?
That would be, so our usual mix through Olmsted County, uh, Justice Commission. That's a mix of county attorney's office, public defender's office, court administration, probation, department, treatment providers throughout the community.
So they're all funded by the state. Why do we want to fund something that the state funds?
We, we do not, if I'm following your question correctly. We, we would only be funding a, a city position, a prosecutor position, working out of our office. It's our role and responsibility for prosecution of state of, of crimes under our jurisdiction. We're the prosecuting agency.
There's a really helpful graphic that Mr. Spender Craig's office has of the different roles of the different agencies as somebody sort of goes through the process. No, it's very detailed across the justice system, but the ci, it does have the city-specific role as
But it's not in this packet today. Did I miss it?
No, no.
No, I think the level of detail is too much for the packet today, but it would be something that could be provided.
So that's why I'm asking questions. Okay. And let me, on the second part of it here, you have a VLC A grant six years ago. Part of the problem I have with the grants, and I, I'm not just picking on you right now, but, but now we have tails, and now we're, we're obligated to pay for somebody to be there. Um, you know, six year ago, years, six years ago, they made that decision. So if we don't do this, we lose the grant? Do we, what, what is the problem?
Yeah, appreciate the question, Councilmember Palmer. But yes, that is a bit, bit of a dilemma, bit of a tie, part of the attraction, of course, and a commitment, um, that, that you make through the grant process. In theory, those are positions that are positions of need that, that we're filling, um, and would need to fill regardless of whether there's a grant available or not. This is a bit of a partnership with, with grant work. Um, we essentially obtain funding from elsewhere for some period of time. Sometimes we don't know whether that's gonna be a year or two years, or could it be six years? Um, and we'll continue to pursue grant opportunities. And no, you're, you're not technically bound, um, by the decision that council made six years ago. But it may be important for the council to follow through on commitments that prior, that prior councils did make, particularly related to, to grant funding positions. Yes, you're not, you're not absolutely obligated to that, uh, but we've tried to keep it on the radar of council that at some point, the important work that that position is fulfilling, um, related to, to our victim cases, um, needs, needs to continue. There was a reason that we sought that grant to begin with. It was a need that the office had and will continue to have if the grant goes away.
So, so Ms. Zelms, do we keep track of all that obligations we have from grants coming up that are gonna hit the property tax?
This has been on the list of decision packages for the last six years or in the space of the City Attorney's Office. There's not significant number of grants that are for individuals. Most of those come through the Department of Justice.
So last July or August, when we had a decision package come across, we would have seen this item?
It was, it's been in the list of decision packages, but it wasn't recommended because we knew the grant had been extended. So we had other sources of funding that could be utilized for it. I think the other thing we constantly do across the entire budget with the baseline is determine whether or not that type of work is the most important work that still continues, for example, in the City Attorney's Office, or is there something else that rises to the top? So we're always looking at optimizing our services and who's providing them, and whether or not, um, that's the highest level of service. We're also coming out of a significant backlog in Olmsted County. Um, so for example, with the, um, the deputy or the, uh, City Attorney One position, that's a matter of, we have a really different caseload right now than we typically would have. So we're in a moment in time where in order to keep up with that, uh, and keep things moving, it's really important to have the right number of hours available in order to keep those things moving through the system, which isn't fully within our control. things moving through the system, which isn't fully within our control. There is a separate part of the justice system called the courts that we are somewhat beholden to through the city attorney's office in being able to meet the caseload that they put forward.
Well, and that's kind of a point for me is, is that the state is obligated to do some stuff, and they kind of schluff it off on us, and, and I'd rather see the state pay for what they are obligated to pay for.
State has never paid for, in my time in Minnesota or in other cities, the prosecution services that are necessary for a city to continue its cases through.
Okay. So the next question I have is for the police department, is this pilot program with the homelessness, isn't that being handled right now by the, by the county?
No, the program doesn't exist, sir. Like I said before, there's a multitude of resources in this community. There's a multitude of continuum of care in this community from Salvation Army, Dorothy Day, the landing, Warming Center, et cetera. What I envision for this program is really trying to get to the root cause of what's causing people to stay out on the streets, whether it's substance abuse, mental illness, can't pay rent, domestic violence, whatever that root causal issue is, is kind of really that dissecting of why are you out here? Because we have all of these resources, and then connecting them with those particular resources, and really hopefully driving them towards giving help and off the streets. So it's, it is a, it is a little bit different approach. It's a more intimate approach. It's a more hands-on approach, and quite frankly, one of the ancillary goals here is to take the cops that are doing this work right now off that tip, that spear, and saying, I need some help here, because it is draining a significant amount of resources for the police department right now. We are currently trying to do that, and we need some help to do that, and I want to try to civilianize that.
And, and because my understanding was that if we had a complaint on a campaign or somebody was, was intent, that we told one of the partners, and they went out and talked to these people and said, hey, you need to move along, and then our officers would show up after somebody posted it and move along. So this person would go out first and say, hey, you can't be here. We have the services for you. Go out and, and, and this is what we can help you with. Is that kind of your thought process?
Yeah, in addition to that, yeah, and so we're, we're in the process of dissecting the numbers, and I apologize, I don't have them in front of you right now, but I think we moved in the realm of 100, you know, cleaned about 130 camps last year. Of that, there's probably multiple people, multiple tents, tents within those different camps, right? And some of those are repeat people. So one of the questions I'm asking internally, and again, I apologize, I don't have the answer, is how many times did we move the same person or the same, you know, just from one spot to the next? And then the next logical question is, why is that person still here? What do we need to do to get that person to resources? And that truly is what I'm trying to accomplish with this.
Well, I appreciate the clarification. So the other question I have for you is on cameras. So I think you're talking $250,000 in cameras. About what, how many cameras do you think that would be?
Um, I probably don't know.
I apologize. I wish I had kept the turk here to answer that.
I guess for me, the, the, the thing that's hard for me is to get complaints that we don't have bathrooms open in our parks because of vandalism. And I would think that we'd be able to put cameras near our, our pavilions so that we can prevent vandalism and allow them to be open. Is, is that a priority of yours, or the city's, or somebody's? So as I said before, you know, talking to Public Works, Transit, Parks, all of our internal partners here, we are having those discussions. It's not just about me saying, where are the hotspots? You tell me as well, where are the hotspots? Where are the cameras? And how do we reduce those quality of life issues within this community? Kind of in a holistic approach, I do see that these cameras would be a step towards that investment.
Because I mean, almost every bathroom in the restroom or pavilion in the east side of town is closed because of vandalism. So it's hard for, for people to, to use that, and so it would be nice to have cameras there.
I can certainly bring that up with the Parks Department.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilmember Wall.
I'd like to follow up on two things that Mr. Palmer talked about. One was the two positions in the city attorney's office, and, and while we won't have to make a decision perhaps in '24 and '25, we will in '26, so we're more or less kicking that budget question down the road. I don't think the first position indicated that evaluation in '26, but I heard Mr. Spindler Craig say that in his oral presentation, so that will come back to us. The second is for Chief Franklin. I'd still like to know how different the homeless, uh, person working with homelessness is going to be different than the people from the county who have been specifically brought on board in order to do, I think, some of the same things that you were talking about. I'd like more clarification, if possible.
Yeah, 100%. So first and foremost, one of the things I'm most proud of in this community and give the county a whole lot of credit for is the fact that they started the embedded social worker program with one social worker. Today it's six. And, and their, their primary focus is people in mental crisis, you know, and, and those calls for service for the last eight years are absolutely trending upwards off the charts. And so they, they work alongside the police officers. They can be deployed themselves to calls for service that don't require police officers, and we've been doing that for years. In the most recent couple of months, working with the county again through our opioid settlement funds, the county has stood up a substance use disorder kind of outreach specialist. That's really still focusing on substance abuse, substance disorder within the community. People will become in contact with families that don't know what to do, maybe with kids with issues, things like that. Both of those two swim lanes, if you will, they deal with homelessness on, on, on a kind of as, as it pops up. Nobody's really focusing directly on that root cause analysis of homelessness in this community, and that's what I would like to get to, again, kind of civilianize what the police department and the police officers are doing right now through the community engagement team. Hopefully that answers it a little bit better for you.
It, it seems like there's a lot of research being done across the nation on root causes of homelessness. That's, boy, are, are we chasing rabbits down holes? Every community trying to do about the same thing? I, I don't know. I, I.
If I may, and I don't want to speak for you, but I think what I see here in Rochester is we have a fairly known community of chronically homeless, and so really looking from a Rochester's perspective of the known population, what are going to be the most likely solutions for those who, how we have had the most recidivism and the most challenges, where it starts to feel like it's 1,000 people, but perhaps there, you know, what is that core number of people that's creating like this perception that there's sometimes perception, sometimes reality, this significant increase, and that housing is the solution, for example, for a core group of people that is very unlikely to be the first step towards a solution? And so really understanding, instead of sending folks in police back out and back out, to have a different uniform, a different conversation, to hopefully get to the core of what is the solution? And sometimes the solution for somebody isn't going to be something that they choose to do on their own. But I think what I'm hearing the chief say is, rather than start with a person who typically requires someone to do something, a police officer, starting with someone who might have a better opportunity, but with the mindset of police, of, of a police department rather than a social service, to try to connect them and also even explain that the results of continued behavior of such, such a nature could result ultimately in a police intervention. And so really having those conversations differently at the outset, so that the police officer is really more when there's a certain type of behavior or chronicness or really dangerous situation, that that's when their skill set is really coming into play, informed very directly by the person that has been out in the field having those discussions and knows exactly the group of people that maybe are going to be moved that day, and can give them more information, and they can have a better understanding of what they're walking into, and also what teammates in parks are walking into. Is that accurate?
That is accurate.
May I say something quickly? I think the reflection that he had on how it fits into the continuum of care indicates to me that this is part of a continued partnership and really bolstering the resources that have been built and not trying to duplicate, but also to recognize police's, police department's strengths and where there's an opportunity to really support people where they're at and not necessarily through the lens of criminalizing homelessness, which I know they're really trying to work to avoid as much as possible. So that's what I'm hearing from you. I, I think those are correct assumptions.
I have another question for Chief Franklin, might not be for Chief Franklin. I did not remember that the city was going to be responsible for the costs of the seven officers in the Bus Rapid Transit. So for us to seek this funding for that, for some reason, I had Mayo tied to those costs.
Yeah, so I'll let Cindy stand to talk about the BRT piece itself. I can address, we, we knew that this was coming, that we would need police officers for policing of the BRT. We knew that we would need time to ramp up and hire the police officers before the operational opening of BRT itself, so we applied for the COPS grant, and I believe the COPS grant is about a 75, 25, 75% grant funded, 25% city-funded match that should have been presented, or I'm pretty confident that that was presented to the, presented to the council as such. So this is just bridging that gap, so we get to the operational period of which I'll let Cindy maybe touch on the operational funding piece of it once it's open.
Sure, thanks, chief. And, and I would echo what you said, this is really to, that bridge funding, the, the cost for the police officers is contemplated in the annual operating model, of which is, as we know, Mayo has agreed to underwrite that, that share so that it can be a fair free system. So this is a two or three-year grant. It is, it is intended to cover the cost for those officers leading up to and bridging up until the, the BRT is operational. We cannot capture operating dollars prior to it, to opening day, and so this is that bridge that the chief speaks to.
Until late '26.
Correct.
Okay. And the last question, and I, I thought that the three presenters did a great job answering a lot of the questions that I had. You really came prepared, I really appreciate it. But would like to know a little bit more about the process as to how the funds were allocated between the department. I, I would, when you talk about priorities, it would seem to me be very hard to prioritize training versus a truck versus an employee. How did that come that the three areas got their specific asks or support? I mean, I know it wasn't all kumbaya.
Actually, it was pretty much so. The, every, every single ask that the police department has supports what the fire department needs for, to do their mission. Same with the attorney's office. Attorney offices in function, we can't enforce code, we can't do our job. So I think us working together, we, each of us saw benefits in what the other was doing because, because those benefits fall onto each, each of us. I, I don't know if that answers your question. So it just, in, internal, I had my priorities, that, speaking for you two, they had their priorities, and we, we talked about which overlapped, which, which had benefits to, to everybody instead of just one, and, and kind of went from there and came up with a list of priorities. Does that help?
Helps. The, the only other thing that I would add is, you know, with any one-time funding, there's some difficulties in that. I think there was a lot of thought put into, you know, how do we not create potential downline tails? You know, training is one of those things. It's an investment into the organization, into the people, into the employees, and so I think that's how we landed there in reference to, you know, same with fire trucks and, and police cars. I mean, that is really truthfully alleviating levy dollars for this community without creating a whole lot of tails downline. And I think there was significant thought in that, if how do we best invest this money as best we can? Maybe even creating some pilot programs of proof of concept for you guys to future evaluate whether or not we want to continue that. I think that's the beauty of this. And so that thought process was had to.
Right. Councilmember Keane.
Thank you. Hey, first, I just want to say, like, the problem in front of us is how we divvy out this money, but I want to commend the state of Minnesota for saying, for, for as part of their budgeting thing, to put aside this money to address public safety after the four years we've gone through in Minnesota with other, different kinds of things. So these are good problems to have how to do it. But I also want to commend City Administrator Zels, because she laid out in the introduction, like, make sure this is lined one-time uses with one-time funding, with training, with, you know, advancing technology. So there was some criteria that was put in front of us, and I tried to look at those as I went through this, and I share some of the concerns of my peers of, are we really filling one-time funding, or are we pushing a problem into a later budget? But I, I don't think I need to go over those again, but those are concerns that come to me. I do appreciate having the kind of camaraderie or professional wisdom within the staff that we can get together and try to break these kinds of things up and come up with it. So with, with that said, again, on the fire one, I do want to, again, very opportunistic on the truck. I mean, I could say that's an operational thing, but I know we always struggle to how we're going to fund trucks, so I appreciate you guys taking that on. As far as the, the fire, on the SCBA funds, is that what you'd consider to be a one-time thing, or is that we're going to fill this hole and we're going to face it again in the future?
I think that every 10 or 15 years, a department will have to replace its SCBAs. That's an expensive investment. We have an ITRF. We could internally buy new SCBAs for the city of Rochester, but I can't, I can only compel my partners in, in, in the rest of the county to, to buy the, the same thing if we all do it together this one time. 10 or 15 years from now, if we've all been using the same thing, and we've seen the benefits of interoperability, I would, I would assume that we would seek other grants to try to replace them in the future. But to achieve this interoperability, there's only two ways to do that. Either this council agrees to buy SCBAs for everybody in the county, which you won't do, or, or we try to do this grant route, in which that, it, it's, it's like a carrot approach where I'm offering the, the other chiefs in the county that, hey, here's an opportunity to replace what you have, and in the end will be interoperable.
Okay. So. I appreciate it. Again, I, I'm just watching out for that idea that we did this, so it's going to be, it's a must-do in 2026 when we look at budgeting, and I, and I'm getting the impression that's not the case, but I'm also watching for those, you know, that's what's happening with our fleet expenses, where I appreciate using some of this money to fill those holes, but that's filling, it's not filling a hole that goes away. It's a problem in the way we're budgeting right now, and we've got to resolve that over time. So again, I appreciate the more of the one-time, and the, and the collaboration across the different groups. And the other questions I had on the police one, there's two different areas. One, it was already discussed about the, the training for the, in, in the future, that's an, that's a, that's going to be funded through an enterprise fund, that's, that's the public transportation funding? Is that how that, at an operational level, that'll be, those positions will be funded there?
I think you're asking about the, the $950,000 for the bridge for the grant funding. Once the BRT is up and running in 2026, it's considered in all of those operating agreements, and it's funded through, not, it's funded through the transit fund.
So it's, and I think of that as an enterprise fund that funds.
Correct. It's not funded through the general fund or tax levy.
That's, that's what I was looking for. The other thing, and again, I, I think I'm just splitting hairs here, but we're talking about the police department recommending the cameras, I appreciate that, but those are city-owned cameras and city-run cameras? Those are not owned by the police department?
Correct.
Okay, good, good. Thank you. One thing that was missing for me, looking at this list, I was looking for emergency management to show up on the list as one of the public safety things. Just to comment on that, that their priorities didn't get to the top, or we consider this money differently?
Councilmember Keane, councilmembers, the, the emergency management was part of the discussion, but they didn't have emergent needs that couldn't already be funded through, oh, I don't remember what the I or the T stands for, but the revolving funds that they have been setting aside for things like tornado sirens. So there's already, it wasn't as critical as some of these other challenging areas that we knew might, but, but for this funding might come forward to the city council. So they, they were part of all of the discussions, and, and each step in that, they didn't have critical needs that would have been as important as these, or that would rise to the dollar numbers that you're looking at here, and couldn't be something that they could adjust for in a future year, either by knowing that they accomplished something in the prior year and utilizing those same professional services for the next iteration of something. So it wasn't a critical need for them.
So my only other comment would be, like, you came with these recommendations, I think the staff seems to be in consensus with it. We saved 20% for future. I, I'll support what you guys came up with, with the idea that you guys know your business better than I, and I think it's well-balanced.
Thank you. Councilmember Dennan.
Patrick? Go ahead. Sorry, want to make sure. Yeah, so I, as any college student or anyone knows it, instead of out-of-pocket grants are better, right? So I think all this grant money is phenomenal. I do echo some of the concerns about the ripple effect of what happens after the grant's done, and we have things established, and how are we going to maintain and, and keep these grant-funded things afloat? So my, a couple of questions for each department. Just real quick with the fire department, it's wonderful. I never personally purchased a fire truck, so trust the judgment of your department. Just with competitive bidding and looking at how long, you know, fire trucks can be used longer than, has all that been factored in when purchasing have, have, you know, bids been brought out to multiple places to see the lowest and best price we can get? bids been brought out to multiple places to see the lowest and best price we can get?
Yes, we use the consortium that, that's used throughout the United States where they, where they competitively bid. We do, we do, we have, we do evaluate all the major manufacturers to, to look for savings, but we balance that against the, having a, a singular fleet for maintaining. It's easier to maintain trucks, vehicles that are all from the same manufacturer for the heavy trucks. So that's a huge consideration for us. And so it is, we could certainly buy a, a truck for, a, a fire engine for less money, but then you have the challenges, how do you maintain it and keep it on the road for thirty to thirty-five years with the, with the maintenance system? We have a great maintenance system, but it's not, our maintenance system is not designed to have a fleet of, a whole fleet of the cheapest trucks possible to buy. So that, those things are all balanced.
Yeah, well, when it comes to safety, quality, of, of course, is a priority, so-
And, and, and to operate them, we've got, we've got twenty-two-year-old people that operate these pumps and hydraulics and having a fleet. When I started, we had eight different manufacturers and every truck was different and, and we've standardized and, and there's, there's a lot of benefit to standardization from a training, from a safety, from a maintenance standpoint.
Well, thank you. And then for police, Chief Franklin, a couple of the, the things, one with the, definitely bringing money to help find, connect resource, resources for people experiencing homelessness. Have, you know, the mayor's not here today, but she has gone to, not other councilmembers have, myself have not been able to go, allowed to go to a National League of Cities conferences, but she has and other people have brought back or have been exposed to ideas across the nation. Have any of that been brought back and, and implemented from other cities? I, I just, I feel definitely partnerships and having positions are important. I just haven't seen a lot of ideas, you know, that I've seen on social media and things been looked at as well. Is, is that going to be part of this position is to, I don't know, find innovative solutions around the country or maybe even world in helping with this growing epidemic?
Yeah, I think, I think this project or asked, this pilot project is reflective of trying to find that innovative solution, if you will. And I would suspect that part of this is to continue to look across this country for best practices and, and see if that fits our needs here locally.
Okay. Okay, I think, I just want to make sure because I haven't heard a lot of information back from some of these conferences. Another thought with, well, DEI training on, on all levels, I think is super important. So I have no issues with spending money, having good, solid lived experience, training for, for everyone in the city. But the question about the police officers for the rapid transit, I know we've talked about this and I just heard from Cindy Steinhouser that it's a, you know, it's going to be a fair free system. My concern is, so residents in Ward one, residents in, in Ward three and five and six who are paying for these police officers through their taxpayer dollars need to get to downtown free in order to truly have a free, fair system, if that makes sense. So having parking available, having the ability for residents to come down to downtown for free somehow and then ride the system, then it would be a fair free system. I feel it, it is maybe geared towards certain larger employers who might benefit more and taxpayers in different wards who might not be able to utilize that system are footing the bill for these additional tax-funded services.
Just want to clarify something that went, what, the bus rapid transit and the officers associated with it will be funded, as pointed out by Councilmember Keane, in an enterprise fund. That is all funded through operational agreements and direct dollars that come for operating the transportation system. It is not funded either in this request for the nine hundred fifty thousand dollars of bridge funding or once it's operational from city tax dollars.
There is going to be city tax dollars used for this system. If you talk about clean out accidents or buses, I mean, there's, there's a lot of components to having this rapid transit system for how many, you know, decades to come. And so I believe residents in Ward one, Ward, all the wards that aren't around downtown will still have to foot the bill for things that they might not be able to utilize for free. So that's my concern. I just wanted to, yeah, okay, that was, I guess, the clarification or I can look more into that, but that was a concern about using grant money that could be used for other things as well, for things that might not benefit every resident equally. So, and then I just, I'll just, I guess no question there. My, my other question about the, and I have a lot of questions, a lot of money, the ripple down effect of having, you know, money put into more positions with the city attorney, victim services. I definitely think that, you know, we've heard it in the news that domestic violence and violence is on the rise. My question is, has there ever been looked at having internal audits for each department to see that staff time is being used efficiently as it is, instead of going above and beyond and using grant money that could be used for a lot of other amazing programs, being used to fund positions that perhaps could be already implemented if time was used effectively?
Yeah, and I, I appreciate the, the question and sentiment, Councilmember Dennis. I, I think what you're asking is do we, do all departments continuously review efficient use of resources and the necessity of FTEs of, of course we do, including my department. We have had that practice in the past and will continue in the future.
So, but for an audit, this is what's brought to me by a leader in the community who really believes that each department should have probably someone come, an external audit, someone coming in to make sure that money is not being wasted as in not being efficiently used, time and resources. And I bring this up from lived experience. If I, a city administrator sends many emails to me, emails that have to do with hotel registrations for conferences, she CCs the city attorney on. I personally am not sure if that's a, a legal, city legal issue to talk about hotel conference.
I think you're getting a little off track here.
No, it's not, this is what I'm saying is, is that was many hours and I have text messages. You said you had used many, many of your highly expensive hours on issues about a hotel arrangement. And so that, those hours, I mean, if you, like ten hours per se, would have been used for victim services.
All right, I think-
I, I, I think an audit would be advised, I would like to have-
Councilmember Dennis, can you pause for one sec? Let's just clarify.
I'll settle down, settle down.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sure. Madam President, Councilmembers, yes, of, of course, this discussion has become about Councilmember Dennis personally and her, her own situation.
The lived experience.
Sure. At, at the end of the day, we have a robust audit system within the city as, as a whole. Administration, of course, is part of those discussions with any individual department. At the end of the day, of course, it's become in council's decision about whether we're using resources wisely and where you, where you cut and where you add and where the priorities are consistent with your broader vision. We continue down that road going forward.
Right, can we move on to the next?
I would like to, with the, the graph that Councilmember Palmer mentioned or that was told by, that I would like to see that graph on where the city attorney uses and what the priorities of the city attorney are so that we can best use, utilize tax dollars. Thank you.
It is a helpful graphic to see how we all work together as a system, city playing key roles, so.
You bet. I'll send that out.
All right, Councilmember Kirkpatrick.
Thank you. Don't recall who these are for.
Oh, it's police, fire.
No, yeah, I, I, I know. And in my, in my first question, I see RFD, so it's clearly for Chief Kurska. Outfitting the new fire truck, is it going to have issues sort of like the new Ford vehicles where the old tools and accessories and connections won't work and we need new equipment? Or because you're sticking with the same vehicle brand, a lot of these parts and pieces are interchangeable?
For the most part, they're interchangeable, not a hundred percent. We, we take the whole, if we, if we retire a fire apparatus, so typically what we're, what we try to do is we'll buy a new fire engine or, or a ladder truck and it'll be in frontline service for fifteen to twenty years. And when, when it was purchased, we would have taken the old axes and hoses and all the tools off the old truck and moved them to the new one. So now, now you have sixty-year-old equipment on a, on a twenty-year-old truck and then it goes into reserve status. And the only time we, we replace equipment is when it just has to be replaced. Some of the, we've got tools on, on some of the ladder trucks that's close to a hundred years old, I'm not kidding, because it just keeps getting transferred. But, but things do wear out and things do need to be replaced, but we're not going to do it in a wholesale fashion. Typically, we're going to have to buy a new laptop computer and new electronics to the GPS for the dispatch system. There are parts and pieces that will be bought with it, but, but not wholesale.
I appreciate that fragility. Thank you. And then what happens to the old fire gear? Are there rules around that? Is it, is it become chemically laden and it needs to be disposed of a particular way? The, your wearables?
Yeah, we, OSHA, it's relatively recently that OSHA decided to enforce an NFP recommendation and started to find departments in Minnesota if it was over than ten years old. In the past, we would, we would give our gear to neighboring departments. We sent, you know, might send it to Ukraine, et cetera, et cetera. And we still might do that, but not as much in the United States anymore because departments can't, they, they could get fined. And the fine is, the fine is cost more than the, than buying new stuff. So it's a significant fine. So we have to mark it accordingly, like for, we can use it for different types of training, like the high school program, but we have to clearly mark it, you know, with spray paint or something so it's visible. Otherwise, we could get OSHA fined that this can't go into a, an actual fire. So we have different, different ways, but it, it's being destroyed more because of age and OSHA. In the future, we may find some of these, these chemical issues that's still being researched and we don't know exactly where that's going to end.
Okay, thank you. And then for Chief Franklin, I appreciate the civilianizing of the programs. I'm assuming you're reaching out to residents, neighborhood associations especially, that can chime up and say, yeah, this area is an issue, could we get a camera here? What about extra policing there? Are, are you getting feedback from across the community like that now? Or is this something that wouldn't be implemented until the funding comes by?
Yeah, so I feel like maybe you're blending two different projects here, but yeah, we, and that's all right, because the bottom line is we welcome all in any community feedback and we're constantly giving feedback in different neighborhoods, different areas, and we're trying to be responsive as we can to that feedback. So yes, that is ongoing with or without the project.
Okay, thank you. Is the, oh my goodness, oh, city attorney, or maybe this was you, Ms. Zelms, mentioning that we in particular, our system is overburdened. I'm assuming that's the third judicial district. Are, are we behind or under a heavier load than maybe other districts in the state? Or are they all kind of on par?
That's a Mr. Spindler Craig, this question.
Yeah.
I can try to answer that, Councilmember Kirkpatrick. Yes, it, it's fair to say that the third judicial district and in particular Olmsted County, we've had a larger share of the pandemic backlog, particularly the criminal backlog that has been a challenge for, for us to sort through. And some of that has been about an inflow that is consistent and elevated as well that is just making it a little bit harder for us to cut into that backlog.
There is significant coordinated effort though, to do as much as we possibly can to rectify that.
Right, right. I figured, I just wondered, and I think it was originally Ms. Zelms that had made the comment that we were overburdened and I just wondered-
We told us not to say overburdened.
Yeah, no, right. That, those are, those are my words, but just there's added stressors here and I just wondered if they were, you know, something that is just about us, Olmsted County, Rochester, third judicial district, or if it was ongoing throughout the state? And you answered my question, so I appreciate that. Thank you. And then I guess I just want to echo a little bit about what Councilmember Keen said. Some of this stuff feels to me like it's about maintenance and having, having funding available for maintenance for those things that we know. For instance, the gear that needs to be replaced every ten to fifteen years, but, you know, taking that axe, it's a hundred years old and it's still functioning perfectly and you reuse that stuff. So I'm just wondering how much of, how much of this could be rotated into a, you know, a, a financial maintenance type of a schedule? So that, that's my last comment. Thank you.
We all have-
Enter a question.
They have maintenance.
Yep, so maybe I could just share that the, the SCBA match, the turnout gear, the, the vehicles, all of those are things that we look to have in revolving funds. We've fallen behind with the cost increases and also, so a couple of things happened for the vehicle fund. We had really low interest rates for a while and that was a key component of refunding the vehicle fund because it sits alone. And so if it's got ten million dollars invested and it's earning five and six percent, that helps you keep up with cost increases. When it's earning less than one percent or one percent, you don't have that component of, of the revolution, if you will. And at the same time, we saw significant increases over the last seven to ten years and especially over the last couple of years in the price of vehicles, especially heavy equipment and some of the different vehicles that are available to us. That with some of the goals to try to look at electrification or hybrid, that, that's kind of press those to even the back that you have to at least have the vehicle for personnel to be in to respond to the call for service. So we have those and we don't want to just increase those in one year. We need to implement some course correction over time or you will have, it's like saucers at a future budget. So we try not to do that. But even some of these expenses, noting that I think it was two years ago that this council approved the purchase of the last ladder truck, which we'll get in two years, or maybe it was a year ago and we'll get it in three, that the police vehicles, we would still want to stagger in, right? And to some degree, like we don't have a choice because it's not four-year backlog, but it's not one or two that we're seeing in some of the vehicles that we need to purchase for police as well. So there's just some significant, you know, and maybe that's a blessing in disguise of being able to spread these out a little bit over time. But, but we also have those revolving funds for that major equipment. So it's collecting money over time for when we think the next lifecycle turnover will be. And I know that the police and fire department have been working hard to be committed to sort of leaders and in relooking at those things and making sure that in baseline that we're updating those numbers over time. We also added the automated external diverters to that three years ago, maybe. So we're always looking at how we might be able to utilize those revolving funds so we don't have like the sticker shock times. This council also acted on the facilities, I can't remember what we call it, facilities maintenance fund, I'll just call it. And so that was something that hadn't been in place before either, to be able to really invest, like when you need a roof, you don't, it's not a really fun thing to put two million dollars in your budget for. We can collect that over time, knowing when we have some of the largest needs. That's one of the goals of our financial planning and that Brian will get to enjoy.
And all the better when we have grant, that, grants that can offset that.
I would say so, yeah.
Final comments, questions? All right, well, thank you all for your time and leadership and look forward to when this comes before us in the next few weeks then?
Well, we'll have this by order. You'll see one large expense coming before you on the twenty-second of January with the fire truck and the pricing and then the remainder of this, looking for approval on the first meeting in February.
Great. All right, thank you. Why don't we take just a few minute break till forty-five and then we will start with our next topic.
Recording stopped.
Recording stopped. Recording in progress.
All right, welcome back, everyone. We are to talk about the city's role in supporting the transformation in our community. And I'm, we have our Deputy City Administrator Cindy Steinhauser here presenting. And I think you'll introduce whoever else on the team is presenting as well, or it's just Allison.
There's no just Allison.
I was actually going to kick it off by thanking Erin and Cindy for doing a lot of work on this. Our communications team for putting a lot of effort into the presentation, which is really the kind of precursor to some additional discussion and really wrapping our arms around all of the wonderful announcements and success we've had in trying to accomplish strategic priorities. And now we're in the phase of doing all of those things, all within like the same six to eight years. So just thanks to the team for that. And I know a lot of work also went into it within Cindy's team and across the organization. So with that, I would turn it over to Cindy, who will be doing the lion's share of the presentation.
And I apologize. That's pretty saucy, so worthy of your position. So, yeah, it it is, as as Administrator Zom said, I'm I'm happy to present, but truly, it's been a team effort. And it's both exciting and a privilege for me to be up here to bring this message forward. It's exciting because when you work in local government, as long as we have collectively, you realize that these moments just do not come along. Rarely do you see what we are ready to embark upon happen in local government. And it's a privilege because it's a team effort. I work with unbelievable teammates who are and partners who are exceptionally talented, knowledgeable and passionate. And as a team, we get up every single day and we think about how we can deliver great service. How can we make this a better community? How can we lift everyone up? And so it's it's incredibly exciting to talk about what's before us and to help you understand your place in leading the transformation that we're about to embark upon. So attempt to, it's not advancing, so I'll just do it the old fashioned way. So what we're here to ask is about how do we, your policy considerations, how do we as a city effectively resource and support the transformation that's about to occur? And when we think about that, a really, it's going to be a two part presentation today and again in February twelfth. When we think about that question and how to answer it, I want you to think about how you do it in a way that bring others along. Because that's a question we're asking ourselves. We're asking ourselves, what will be our legacy with how we respond to this moment in time? What will people look back generations from now? Because this is really, this is a generational transformation. What will people say? And more importantly, think about what is the cost of doing nothing? Because that certainly is a consideration. It's not the consideration we'd like you to think about, but it is a consideration. So to engage in this conversation, we want to do a little bit of table setting. And today is really about table setting. You're going to see slides that are very familiar. You saw them through the the budget process. But I think it's, again, important for those watching now or watching in the future to understand kind of the environment that we're currently in. So again, Rochester, at a glance, third largest city in Minnesota. Geographically, we're the second largest city. We're the largest St. Paul, but we are less than a third of the population. And that's important to understand when you think about managing growth and managing transformation. And we are growing. Part of our success and part of what's really driving our, that success today is that we have a really great North Star. You, as elected officials, have given us a policy agenda that is our compass. And the city administrator regularly reminds us that it's about clarity, unity and alignment. And so when we think about the work that we do every single day, and we're going to talk about our baseline work and this transformation work. Again, we we need that North Star to point to. We need to continue to come back to your policy agenda, come back to the strategic priorities. We need to think about both what are the opportunities now in continuing to maintain the exceptional services that we deliver? And and you've heard just a handful of that earlier in earlier in today's presentation. And there's so much more as an organization of almost a thousand people. But then thinking about the opportunities that will inevitably come as a result of this trajectory that we're on. So let's talk about the areas of existing stewardship. Again, I'm going to refer to your budget in brief because the numbers are important. Understanding context is important. So annually, our operating budget is about five hundred and eighty million dollars. We have a large capital improvement project plan, right? It's about a hundred and eighty-three million dollars this year. Over the next six years, it's one point one billion, one point one billion in capital projects, not just our operating dollars. When we think about how those dollars are distributed, again, you can see the lion's share is around services that we provide, contractual services. So partnership is really important in the day to day work that we do. And when we think about capital projects, here's just our top five for this year. And they're all significant, right? In any one year, all of these projects would be significant. And they're, but they're examples of the foundational work that we do every single day for the citizens of this community. And again, collectively, our CIP budget is one point one billion dollars over the next six years. I find it interesting when we talk about how do we perform, how do we get efficient, right? It's a fair question. It's a question we ask ourselves. I know I do, and I know the exceptional leadership team that I work alongside, the peers and and what Administrator Zom does is challenges us every single day. Are we being as efficient as we can? And when you look at this chart, I think it really drives home as a community, as a city organization, we have, our operations have grown between a hundred and ten to two hundred and sixty-two percent. But our employee base has grown by seventeen percent. How does that happen? Yeah, it happens through technology, no, no doubt, right? But it happens because you have a team that regularly challenges themselves to improve process, be as efficient as we can. How do we capitalize and leverage on partnerships? Because maybe we're not the best team to be doing that, but our partners are and we lift them up and we support them. You cannot have that kind of growth in services with so little growth in expanding your employee base without being an efficient team. But at some point, you reach your cap, right? And so that's the conversation today and on in February is evaluating what additional resources and commitment we need to bring to this conversation. And yet, sorry, trying to get ahead of myself. I really also like these these images here from the budget in brief. Again, hats off to the communications team because they're the quantitative measures that we can reflect on in terms of how we perform every single day across all of our departments, right? And yes, the numbers are important. What's more important is what these numbers say in terms of an outcome. So when we think about Fire Department, Police Department, Parks and Rec, Community Development and our wastewater utility, it's about supporting growth, it's about safety, and it's about quality of life. Those numbers tell that story. When we talk about Rochester Public Utility, an or a department that touches every single household, every single commercial entity, every single industry and nonprofit in this community and what they deliver and what they do it in in a professional and as efficient a way as possible. When we think about our public works team and how we support our community staying safe and connected, we do that through the work of of public works and the partners that they work alongside. All of this conveys a confidence in our community that we're able to deliver the services that residents have come to expect and in a way that hopefully feel lives up to their expectations. And that's really what this next slide is about.
So, yeah, I I get a couple of slides, but not very many. And so I think what's really also important is that all of that day to day work that happens hour to hour, teammate to teammate, sometimes alone, sometimes in teams, sometimes twenty-four seven in the middle of the night, sometimes unexpectedly. But we're always prepared for that, is the community survey results continue to show that people, how do people feel about the city of Rochester and the place that they live or they own a business? And as much as the numbers and the outcomes are important, really what's important to people for where they live or where they're choosing to live is how that makes them feel. And I think it's really a testament to how hard each of our teammates work. That's why I present that at the beginning of each of your council meetings, is that the work that I do really doesn't matter if the little things that they do every single day are not impacting people's lives in a way where they feel as safe as possible. The perception of safety is as important as the numbers that say that we're safe. If people don't feel safe, then it doesn't really matter what the numbers say about how safe they are. The quality of life that people feel like generally it's a good place to live. And we know also that all of these things are not consistent across every demographic right now. And so we we know that that's true now and we know that in the future, which is only seven and eight years away with some of these significant investments, that may also be true unless we are able to interrupt that with how we deliver those projects and support them. So on the next slide, I do think it's really important to think about, you know, this, that, what time really means when we're we're thinking about seven years. It seems like, well, that's, that's, you know, one year in seven years is a dog year. But one year in the life of a community can feel really long and really short. So when we think about the printing press, that was something that happened four hundred years before the telephone. But when you think about the iPhone, you've had that since two thousand and seven. So the the rate of innovation that has been happening just in general, because we have technology, because we're more connected globally and as communities, is really making it so that when we're meeting the moment with some of these projects, we have to do that differently and really not just think about, okay, we're building a bridge, we're building something, we're supporting private investment. But what does that really mean for how the community feels for people? And how does that feel for people who are living in the community day to day, where seven years in delivering the magnitude of projects we're going to talk about today as a teammate is both exceptional and won't happen again in my career or lifetime and probably won't happen again in the lifetime of people that live in Rochester in that short span of time? But also, every day that they're driving and going to work might feel really long. So really thinking about what do we need to do? And what do you feel as folks who live here, who are parents here, who are grandparents here, who maybe are caring for aging adults here? You know, what does the scope and scale of all of this tied together in one presentation? And what it means for the innovative moment that we're in in Rochester? A city of a hundred and twenty-one thousand people with the scope and magnitude that Cindy's going to present? What does that really mean for us? And and what do, what do you want to see as a council in how we deliver those projects and how we are established as a community to not just meet the moment of the next seven and eight years of delivering the projects, but how that can transform our community to help lift up more folks, at least not create more gaps and really make sure that we aren't in a space of that prior slide where, you know, we've squeezed the turn up and we aren't able to continue to deliver that feeling of people enjoy living here, capturing what people love already here and elevating and and keeping the momentum for that as we continue to transform with new investments. So Cindy's going to get into more of the details. You've seen all of these at some point, but you've never seen them all in one presentation. So I think it's really important to to show the real scale of what we're facing and the moment that we're able to be able to deliver on over the next few years.
Great, thank you. And so as Administrator Zom says, we've been on this journey. Certainly, the announcement by Mayo, their Bold Forward Unbound announcement catalyzed the conversation at a pace in which we hadn't originally anticipated. But we have been on this journey, right? When you look at the seven, I don't want to call them bubbles because they're really great graphics, but they're bubbles to me, right? We, up there is a journey in time that goes back a number of years. Yes, we have this year's announcement or twenty twenty-three's announcement about Bold Forward Unbound, but Destination Medical Center, twenty fifteen, right? A five, a a five point six billion dollar initiative specifically thinking about how do we invest five hundred and eighty-five million dollars in public realm in this community over the next twenty years? We are almost to the halfway point of that initiative. The Park Levy adopted a couple of years ago as an injection of dollars to really invest in our park system because it was much needed. The local option sales tax, the recent renewal, right, of a two hundred and five million dollar investment in this community over the course of fifteen years, likely shorter, given the pace in which investments and dollars are being spent. RPU's twenty thirty plan to go a hundred percent renewable, get out of that contract and really think about innovative power supply and sustainability in for the future of that that system. Our approach to pursuing additional federal and state funding. We've been really lucky to get regular annual state and federal operating dollars, but really thinking about how we capitalize. But really thinking about how we capitalize and advance your policy agenda and use tools like state and federal dollars available, again, unprecedented levels that are available to us at this moment in time. And I will also want to say that we've been on this journey in terms of the private investment that's been happening. As a community, our four highest permit years have been since twenty eighteen. The highest permit valuation occurred in twenty twenty-two, coming out of a global pandemic. Right? So again, thinking about what's uh what we're about to share? What's the cost of doing nothing versus thinking about it from an abundance mindset and bringing people along in a way where there is abundance? So let's talk about bold forward unbound. What does it mean to activate our community to respond to a five billion dollar investment? To be known as not only America's city for health, but of the global city to come to for healthcare. Of course, we're familiar with the announcement. It's five billion dollars. It's two point four million square feet of new space. The first buildings open up in twenty twenty-nine, five years from now. Blink and it'll be here. The project's complete by twenty thirty. And it's not just about their five billion dollar investment. There's five hundred million dollars in sustaining projects. These are projects that they're going to do to mitigate construction impact to medical visitors to the community. And that's on top of their annual capital investment that they do year in and year out. So that's what bold forward unbound is. And it's really, really important, not only for us here in this room, but for the community to understand the context of these dollars as compared to other projects. So first, first column there, that's our permit valuation, great year. Six hundred million in permit valuation in twenty twenty-three, again, top four year. The second is the St. Croix Bridge at six hundred and forty-six million. The next line is US Bank Stadium at one billion. The fourth line is Amazon Headquarters, and I want to just pause and talk about that project. That project's it's two point five billion dollar project, over two million square feet of space. That sounds familiar, right? It was the largest um economic development attraction effort done in the United States. Over two hundred and forty communities submitted to try and win that project. They spent hundreds of thousands of dollars to position their community to be the community to be selected for a two point six five billion dollar investment. State of Minnesota bonding bill in twenty twenty-four, largest bonding billing in this bonding bill in the state at two point six billion. The light rail project at two point seven billion. Minneapolis Airport, three point two billion dollars. The largest project in the state of Minnesota's history until two months ago. Two months ago, Mayo Bold Forward Unbound, five billion dollars. I did some Googling. Their project is more than the top five projects in the United States in twenty twenty-three. That's what we're talking about when we're talking about the investment of just this project. And now let's talk about the other things. Let that sink in. Two hundred and five million dollars of local option sales tax that this community committed to, and it's exciting. But when you think about the four areas, I want to focus on the the two in the middle, street reconstruction, flood control and water quality. That's continuing really great work that we're already doing. But those other two items, economic vitality and a regional sports and recreation complex, this is additive work. This is new initiatives that we're taking on. Economic vitality, what are we doing to respond to workforce needs and housing needs in this community? It's the tip of the iceberg, really, when we think about what is needed. And when we think about quality of life and being a regional hub and attracting that kind of activity versus losing that business to uh other communities in the state, or quite honestly, we're close enough to lose them to other states, other cities in the state or other states. So that's new, that's additive investment that we're talking about here. And then I want to talk about state projects. And it's important, you know, today is really just to walk through these, it's not to do a deep dive into these projects in particular, but to highlight for you some of what's coming on board. So uh, Will Creek Trail and Safety Connection, a three point six million dollar project. The Parks Maintenance Facility, it's a forty million dollar project of which we've got fourteen million in state state bonding. That project will will correct a sorely undercapitalized uh enterprise operation, not enterprise operation, but operation in our city in in our city coffers. When we think about how the park system has grown and the facilities that we use to support that park system, it's sorely undersized and it's a sorely needed facility. The Water Reclamation Plant, this year, an eighty-four million dollar project that needs to happen. By twenty-eight, an eleven dollar, eleven million dollar generator replacement. This project is almost a hundred million dollars in the next four years. Federal funding projects. Airport, huge economic driver for our community, eighty million dollar project. The Expansion and Decarbonization Plan to really help start to address your greenhouse gas reduction goals, seventeen million dollar project. The North Broadway Park and Ride to help relieve congestion into our downtown, addresses air quality, addresses uh interruptions into neighborhoods, this park and ride. So federal funding to to um respond to our transportation and mobility needs. The Downtown Building Energy Transition, twenty-three million dollar project. Again, advances your hundred percent renewable by twenty thirty goals as well as thinking about making our city facilities smarter, more efficient. And there's other federal funding projects. This is just an example of the other kinds of projects that we are regularly in conversation about or are underway and we're seeking funding for because they help advance your strategic priorities. Talked a little bit about RPU twenty thirty Power Supply Plan. It is about that hundred percent renewable twenty thirty, getting out of that SIPA contract and being able to make more choices about how power comes and is delivered into this community. It's about investing almost thirty million dollars into advanced metering infrastructure so that we have smarter systems. We are able as as an individual, I'm able to make, I get better data and I'm able to make better decisions about how I use energy in my household. Sure checks that affordable living bucket, checks that quality services for quality living bucket. It also checks economic development bucket when you think about making it more affordable for businesses to do business here. The Park Levy, talked a little bit about it again, thinking about the amazing park system that we have and what our team does. An investment in Soldier's Field of twenty-two million dollars, an investment in Silver Lake and in Martin Luther King Park. So twenty-two million dollar project scheduled to be completed this year. Silver Lake. Project cost is seven million dollars. We currently have four million dollars pursuing other options. Twenty twenty-four construction start date. And then let's talk about Destination Medical Center, legislation and this established in twenty fifteen, right? It's really about how do we guide five hundred and eighty-five million dollars of public infrastructure investment? And for what purpose? To help attract five point six billion dollars in private investment. And when we think about what happens downtown, when we think about, um, I'm going to show you a slide here in a little bit. When we think about downtown, it's one percent of our geographic area, but it contributes fourteen percent to our budget. There is a net positivity to investing in the downtown area. That leveraged that leverages further investment. So how are those dollars being spent? We're we're on track. We're almost halfway through and you can see what was spent in your one in phase one, which is twenty fifteen to twenty nineteen, just under a hundred million dollars. We're in the next five years looking at about two hundred million dollars. So again, thinking about how we spend over the next ten years, the remaining of that five hundred and eighty-five million dollars in these five key buckets. So I want to talk a little bit about how some of those dollars are being spent. And while these projects are shown under DMC, because we really want to acknowledge that there's an important local partnership in delivering these projects, it should um not be understated that these projects are also happening because of additional funding coming from the state and federal level. So again, Link Rapid Transit, hundred and forty-three million dollars. There is going to be almost three mile, two point eight mile system, fare free, not only for rider riders um that are coming for whether they're coming here for a convention or medical tourism, but for the almost thirteen thousand people that live within a five-minute watershed of this Link BRT as well as those that come and do the park and ride and take advantage of it. And so what this means is if you're living in those neighborhoods, if you're living um outside of the downtown and you want to not have the challenges of parking, you can park remote and you can ride and get to services. You can get to amenities, cultural institutions, et cetera. West Transit Village, currently a surface parking lot. A really exciting redevelopment that not only includes parking, but includes housing and retail and that connection to one of our really great assets, and that is Cascade Lake. Riverfront redevelopment. Again, when we think about how do we leverage private investment with with the work that we're doing in the public realm? This is sixty acres that at buildout will be two hundred and sixty million dollars of development could re contribute to our tax base of what is a surface parking lot right now. And providing better connections to the neighborhoods that surround it. So when we went to that, when we did that small area plan, we said, okay, how do we start to bring this plan to life? And so we went after dollars because we heard infrastructure is important. If we didn't do the necessary infrastructure, that two hundred and sixty million dollar development would be about seventy million dollars. So we know we can maximize and takes advantage of of funding at the federal level to make this project come forward. And so thirty million dollars, six street riverfront and neighborhood safety improvements. Does include a bridge? Yes, but it includes so much more. It is a six street that is a complete streets project that connects neighborhoods and green brings us to a a really great amenity that not every city has, a riverfront. This slide I really, I really like because it helps bring home the concentration of where this work is happening, right? If you look on this, and I'll try and use my cursor if you, it's hard to see, but there's a dotted line here. That is a quarter mile line, about a five-minute walk that really helps you understand how much work is happening in a pretty tight space. And we could do something similar around the Gonda Building and thinking about the neighborhoods and along over at West Transit Village and thinking about the neighborhoods and then Link Rapid Transit. But is this is also an area where it's not just what we're doing, it's not just the inbound project, but there are other opportunities with um whether it's city parcels or other private vacant redevelopment sites that are in active conversations around redevelopment. And so how our investment leverages that and how do we um again uh work alongside each other to deliver this kind of growth? And it isn't, I I'm not um bringing the slides for you to feel overwhelmed, but for you to feel excited, right? Because it doesn't stop there. We know that now is the time to start the conversations for the future. As administrators on says, like, we will have a new baseline at the end of these seven years. By twenty thirty, we will have a new baseline and we'll be attractive in a different way for different kind of investment. And now is not too soon to be thinking about what does BRT phase look like? What does South Broadway look like? It's a major um feeder into our downtown and into our community. And so while we're thinking about the now, we're thinking about the near, we're also thinking about the future and what is needed. And what is needed is not just up to us. This is a call to the community. This is a call to our partners. Because when we think about billions and billions of dollars of investment, it's about thinking, how is it going to impact housing? How is it going to impact talent attraction and economic development? Education, equity, you can say, I'm not going to read all the bubbles to you. And where is our place to either lead? For example, public realm, and I'll talk about that, leading in the public realm space or support? We're not going to take the lead on education, but how do we support our education partners or influence? When we see that there's a gap that exists and if we don't address that graph gap, we don't bring people along. We leave someone behind and that can't be our mindset. We have to think about abundance, not scarcity. We have to think about bringing everybody along. So I want to specifically talk about public realm, and I really, really like this graphic from Project for Public Spaces because I think it captures what we want to try and do and what makes successful communities and at the core is thinking about the place. And when you think about the place, you think about it from a lens of sociability, from uses and activities, from comfort and image, from access and linkages. And then it grows up from there when you think about what are the tactics and what are the measures when you think about place? And so when we think not only about the five hundred and eighty-five million dollars of DMC, when we think about all those other city projects that we've talked about and future city projects to come. And then it's really important for us to understand that transformation, while exciting, is also tough work, right? So uh, when we talk about the four pieces of transformation, it's about having a strategy, right? You can't just wake up one day and say, oh, I think this makes sense. Like, again, that clarity, unity, alignment, how does this feed up into our our north star? It's about having patience, a lot of patient capital, and I'm chuckled because I'm not one known for my patience. I want to do it now, but it is about bringing people along at a pace in which they can accept, but not at so slow the pace that it puts us behind, right? How do we capitalize in the moment? It's about being resilient. This is going to be tough work. People are going to be frustrated, right? Our job is to unfrustrate them, to not let them get to the point of frustration. Let that community experience still be as positive as it can be while still advancing the work that we need to do. And it's about growth and growth is about iterating, it's about learning, it's about approving, it's about responding, it's about measuring. So when we think about transformation and believe me, the people that I have the privilege of working with, this is in their DNA. They know how to do this. This is how they think. And that's why I'm excited to be part of this team. It's an honor. So today is about laying the groundwork. Um, and we're going to have a conversation in February um with you, and we're going to talk about what do we need to do in terms of teams and resources to secure for the now, right? How do we pursue ex- external funding? How do we bring people along in this advocacy? What do we need to do during the time of construction? Say, construction can generally, but during the next seven years, what is it that needs to be done? And what kinds of teammates and resources are needed to deliver on that? And then what's our new norm? Like post the billions of dollars that I've just talked about? What's our new norm and how do we sustain that? And how do we respond to new opportunities post completion of these projects? And again, I will go back to what I said in the beginning and then I turn it over to administrative zones. What will people say? What will be they say about how we responded to this moment in time? How do we think about this, not from a scarcity mindset, from an abundance standpoint? And what is our cost of doing nothing? When we think about what's before us?
You have to change the slide. So so I think it is actually really exciting um to think that we literally are here. We're beyond the artificial intelligence in the city of Rochester with what Mayo is trying to achieve in transforming healthcare. How many cities can say that in the world? Probably almost none. How many cities of our size, a hundred and twenty-one thousand people, I would argue none are at a pivotal moment um in their ability to not just transform global healthcare, but with that transformation that is coming with our partner um in Mayo Clinic and what they intend to do right here in Rochester. Um, but how do we make sure that we're catalyzing that for our own community? And making sure that all of the other projects that are also getting delivered at that same time are done well while we still continue to do our day-to-day service as well and in a way that is able to um sustain itself and maybe even grow itself um with the value of those new investments that are coming in. So I can't understate enough or overstate enough what a pivotal moment this is for a community. I think it's why any number of us um were attracted to come to Rochester and help to uh make that a possibility. It's why we continue to invest in our teammates and looking at that leadership development. It's going to that same amount of resilience and of difficulty is something that our teammates that are delivering on all of these projects will face. And so being able to do that pre-investment in them to make sure that they're able to meet the moment and also welcome new teammates to help us during this transformational period um is really something that will help us to um help you leave that legacy in a way where people um when they're looking backwards on their time growing up in Rochester twenty years from now um feel just as good um over that the next twenty years that we're facing as they did um when they are youngster going to elementary school, um as when they hopefully come back and are working at some of the places that are inspired by either the Mayo Clinic directly or the resulting uh transformation that we'll see as people continue to want to invest in Rochester. Um, so how do we make sure that um we aren't um along for the ride and it's not being done to us, but it's being done with us? And we're able to really influence that outcome in a way that meets your strategic priorities? Um, that it honors the things that you hear out in the community? Um, and that it is something that really does live beyond us. I mean, but what kind of investment that we're going to see over the next eight to ten years? And then, of course, that we're going to continue to maintain and have that momentum going forward for this community is going to outlast all of us. going forward for this community is going to outlast all of us and some of our lifetimes. It will certainly outlast some of our career lifetimes. So we have a really unique opportunity as well to consider succession planning and those types of things that other communities don't have that opportunity with such a short window of time with this amount of investment coming into our community. And really do that in a way that does distribute that value across the community, whether that is additional capacity and revenue growth that we'll have and some of the private investment that will help us to meet the moment and continue to maintain a high quality of service across the entire community. Or whether that is making sure that where we target those investments for sales tax and other projects that aren't all the way completely designed can really also help our community to stay feeling good about where they live, attract people to want to be here and be able to deliver on the moment that's before us. So with that, I would just say a big thank you to Cindy for all the work that she's done on this. And the team, I think what we're really hoping for is to get some of your feedback as we move into that phase two, whether that's now or some silence. But I think it was really important to bring all of this together to show that that seven years is going to fly by like a blink of an eye. And also, as, as we move through it day to day, feel, feel long. So both of those things can exist at the same time. And how do we make sure that at the end of the day, at the end of each day, we are feeling good about how the chart was course for the city of Rochester?
Thank you so much to staff for that inspirational presentation. Thank you, Cindy. I sent Allison a note when I was reviewing the packet. I'm like, oh, my heart is bursting. This is totally my jam with Achiever and Significant Strengths. So thank you for putting this before us. And it's pretty fortunate that we all get to influence the role of the city in making all of this transformational change happen. So I will turn it over to Councilmember Keane to start the discussion.
Good, good. Thank you. Yeah, again, I, I, I understand the policy consideration of resourcing this and transitioning it. But I, I might come up with different, you know, different reading when I'm going through this. Because the net of what I'm seeing in front of us is we've been like enormously successful as a city going out and kind of getting some bonding things and getting some federal projects and having DMC in our city. And then the Mayo stuff comes along and the BRT and all this stuff in front of us. And what, what I'm cringing about is how do we transition from like going out and getting projects and getting them funded to execution? And frankly, I'm really worried about this. Because I, I think there's a tendency with the council. And I'm reminded in my old IBM days where, you know, there'd be the technical team versus the management team. And the technical team would be working through some of these hard things. And just like, well, we need management help. And the comment was, they're off on the next shiny thing. And, and it's, it's, there's some truth to it. Management's always looking to say, what's next on the horizon versus how do we do what's in front of us? And my concern over these next twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five is staying focused on execution. I mean, to the point that I'm going to be less willing to be interested in the next shiny thing, that we need to go and do these other ones. And I, I think it's important that we, my, my view of three, four years from now is how weak we look if we can't get the BRT in place in twenty twenty-six. If Mayo's first trying to put something up is stalled for two years because we don't have the right process in place. I think that's, in my view, that's my focus. So it has that, maybe it's not the intent you wanted, but I'm concerned about execution. I know we have the riverfront plan. I know we're trying to do things at the airport. Those things have to continue to some extent, but I think the focus has to shift. And, and that's how I'm going to approach it. And I'm one member here, but I, I am concerned about us looking competent as we take on these next, these major initiatives.
And if I could maybe ask, if I could kind of react to that, because I'm actually a little bit relieved. Of course, it's only one person. But if we could go to the next slide, I think that really is important because the life cycle of how communities grow, economies change, how we transform, even how that innovation wheel works, is that when we're in the during, we have got to deliver. So in the during, we're thinking about what's next, but we're not adding more projects during, right? We're delivering. We're in that delivery stage, as you point out. And so, and we still have to deliver those day-to-day services well, as well. And a lot of these folks are, have one foot in both of those worlds who are going to be working on this. But also, it's really important to have enough people that are, that have their foot in the delivery mode so that we make ourselves positioned for, for the post and what's next, so that we're in that next cycle of gaining and then delivering again based on, it may feel very different in certain parts of our community. People's attitudes towards what they need after Soldier's Field Pool is complete may shift a little bit. They may not. They may gain even more momentum towards pool. So, but I think it's like the, kind of the perfect amount of time when you think about like seven years, seven generations. That's what we're talking about here. Like, seven years for seven generational projects is really what we're going to need to be delivering on and thinking about what other sustaining and growth projects will be necessary for the community as it continues to evolve. Meeting needs and honoring the past, but also really recognizing that in the future, we may have different needs to overcome. But we're a city that's positioned well, hopefully, because of all of this investment, to do that in a different way than other communities might be able to achieve.
I think your comments make a lot of sense. I would look at it more as a, how do we make sure we're resourcing our, and having the right staffing model to be successful instead of worrying so much about it? It's, it's an opportunity. We, we get to think creatively about the types of skills we need in our team as we think about adding capacity that really are those incredible executors so that we, as council and administration, can keep that big, big future view and build towards that. But I think that's so smart to say. And I've heard administrations say that too around, we don't want to just keep adding, adding, adding. We have all of this stuff. Let's do it really well, but let's do it in the context of also thinking about the future. Councilmember Wall.
Thank you. On slide twenty-seven, it says that we expect to grow fifty percent in twenty years. I hadn't heard that figure before. So in twenty years, a hundred eighty-seven thousand people?
Yeah, I think it's generally about three percent a year. That's a statistic, yes.
And not all of those people, clearly, many come with families, some come singly. Not all of those people are Mayo people, a lot of wraparound folk to serve. So in twenty years, a hundred eighty-seven thousand people?
Yes.
Okay. Is that?
Erin, can you remind me? That was from a number of years ago. It was a statistic that, from a study that happened right before I got here. I think it was twenty eighteen. Is that right?
If I recall.
Okay, yeah, I, I can get the data for you. But yeah, fifty percent by twenty.
I guess I would maybe just also add, if we look backward to look forward, when we were in sort of a growth model where our community was growing outward. If you think about that forty-year graphic from nineteen eighty to today, we had two hundred and ten percent almost growth in our population. And some, you know, now we're looking at that more from the perspective of we're unlikely to be like growing outward in that perspective, but to be able to support the amount of investment that's here and meet our housing challenges and our employment challenges and being able to do all those things, it's pretty likely that we'll have a certain amount of growth. Now, back when that study was done, we didn't have like hybrid and remote work. So there may be some things that have also evolved that help us to achieve that in a different way. But a lot of the work that happens, for example, the city of Rochester, eighty percent of our employees never worked from home during the pandemic because they're out in the field doing work. They can't, you can't, you can't police from home.
Thank you. Slide thirty-seven talks about the survey from twenty twenty-two. Could you send, at least to me, if not to everybody, the, the data for that? And secondarily, if we were to, and this might be a guess, or you may have some insight from other cities as well. If we were to do the same survey in Mankato or Des Moines, how, how different would that look if you have that information?
I do not, but I can certainly ask.
Yeah, I can, I can just answer that quickly. A couple of important points. One will certainly get you the survey information. We use a nationally standardized survey when we do this work. So it is compared against benchmarked communities, not necessarily all Minnesota-based, but communities like Rochester throughout the country. So we have the, we're better than average. And of course, that's always what we're looking for as Minnesotans, right? But then we also have, you know, where we're not. So it was done, we're actually at the point now, and I think the team is working on getting the update to that kicked off. So you'll see that survey coming out this year. And it's statistically reliable. So we do put a lot of time into it. We have a lot of cross tapping of the data. And we are, again, should have more information this summer in terms of that update for you.
That'd be great. I look forward both of that and to have the information from the previous survey. My last question is slide sixty-nine and seventy. I don't know any specific support for downtown initiatives. That is obviously coming to us next, I think it's coming to us next Monday. Is there support in any substantive funding for downtown initiatives from DMC?
So as part of your annual budget process, remember that DMC budget is a both say yes. And so we do this annual exercise with the first of the DMC teammates to talk about how we want to spend recommended projects in those five areas. And, you know, mobility, invest, I can't think of all of them off the top of my head. But so we go through an exercise and, and determine what, what makes sense with the information that we have, with work that we're doing. And so that is, comes before you every fall as part of the budget process. So every year it includes, for example, there are pre, pre, I don't want to call them activation dollars, or pre, pre-development dollars that are around things like artwork and streetscape and kinds of enhancements that provide the kind of amenities in downtown that we, you know, people are looking for when they want to experience downtown in a way. We also have things like the facade grant improvement program. We have, we've been working through the downtown task force. We have been working with the clerk's office, well, really the clerk's office has been doing in terms of how we get smarter and do efficiencies to streamline approval process, processes for businesses in downtown. So the, the annual budget process that we do with the DMC dollars is both an exercise in investing in the public realm as well as then what do we think about in terms of programs and services that we could enhance that make it a more positive experience for the businesses that are in downtown and for the people coming to downtown? So that's done through.
So I think that the answer was no. There's really nothing in there for possible historic district initiatives.
Oh, no, there's certainly, I mean, that's, that is a policy question for you. So on the, the Monday night's council agenda is the historic district. And there is a recommendation around what the cost of, for example, financial incentives would be, what the cost of enhanced public realm would be, and dollars associated with that and, and potential sources of funding, whether it comes through, you know, economic vitality or some other, if you want to use general levy or how you want to appropriate dollars, there's costs associated with it. That's a policy question if you want to direct those dollars through the annual budget or by annual budget process or supplemental, which is off here.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kirkpatrick.
Thank you. Could you please go to slide four for me?
Slide four?
Yes, and by the way, thank you so much for numbering your slides. I appreciate presentations having slide numbers on them.
Let me just escape out of here and turn.
There's something in the lower left corner that caught my attention and unfortunately held my attention for most of the presentation in not a very positive way.
Is, okay.
Something to do with affordable housing, building affordable and market rate housing.
Is it, so my slide four is the three strategic priorities.
Yeah, lower left one, something like affordable housing.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah. This one right here?
I think so. Yes, construct market rate and affordable owner occupied housing. Isn't thirty for, thirty percent of our population less than fifty percent AMI?
I, I don't know this stat.
Sure you do. You're the assistant's.
If you're asking.
She has no for sure off the top of her head.
Yeah, I don't know it off the top of my head.
Okay, well, I believe that's what's been quoted by Ms. Edens, Ms. Woodford, Woodward, excuse me, and you in a couple of meetings that we have had, I believe it was earlier last year. This is very frustrating to me because so much of our community cannot afford affordable housing or owner occupied housing at market rates. And by affordable, obviously affordable is suggested to be thirty percent of our income, right? I mean, affordable for you is different than me or different than our new Mulholland gal sitting over there that's been promoted. Thank you. So I don't know how we're going to achieve that. I see no momentum forward on that. I, I, and it's very frustrating to me because I represent a ward that has significant issues in this area. We have a lot of retired folks, a lot of folks that are on fixed income. We are seeing property rates go up, and they will go up more. This, this double edged sword of bold forward unbound. Mr. Keane's a little concerned about, you know, how this is going to go. And he's a little shaky on, wow, are, are we going to be able to pull this off? I know without a doubt Mayo is going to pull through with shining stars. They are a stellar institution. I don't worry about us either as a city being able to keep up and manage this. I think we have the tools and the skill set and the talent with our folks that work here. But I keep seeing the people fall behind. And, and I know you all are the people too, right? You all have elected us here. But that, that little number one there is very concerning to me. And so that's not a question, it's just a comment.
Well, and I would just, I would say, I appreciate that. We've had a number of conversations. This is your policy agenda, right? These are your words, these are words that I made up. But I will say that coming, upcoming study session is going to be on local option sales tax, including the economic vitality bucket and the strategy and I, around affordable housing, right? But housing in general, right? There's, there's also a certain sentiment around if you create a product, there's a shift in what it frees up and allows for opportunity. You know, does someone that's in a hundred and eighty thousand dollar home then suddenly move up to two hundred and fifty or so on and so forth? And is there a rental market that shakes loose and provides that opportunity? So I think this, it, while I understand the concern, it's not to say, don't do market rate. Put a, put a tighter lens on affordable housing because it's a greater need, but certainly not, it can't be an either or conversation, right? Because there are, there are still needs that we have, for example, in single family home, not just, you know, affordable rental property, right? And your investment in the, the housing study that helped us identify what we need in multifamily downtown, what we need in the community is a good data point for us to use to guide how do we help advance? Private sector wants to do market rate. And how do we inject support for affordable owner occupied housing? And so some of that conversation, and, and I would argue also, how do we preserve, right? How do we not get gentrification? How do we preserve naturally occurring affordable housing? So you don't lose it to, to, you know, some other kind of, of development. Like, that is very much part of the daily conversation I know Irene and her team have. And I think part of that's going to be covered in the local option sales tax study session coming up.
Thanks. I, I guess it would just make more sense to me or feel, feel a little better in my position as a, as a representative for a portion of the community if it were to say something like, construct housing that serves our population equitably.
Because if I may, I just, I think that there's also an importance that when the council went through this and elevated three things, there's still like, I don't even know how many pages, eighty pages of detail also behind this. But that this is a really challenging one because of the incentives that are not available for this type of housing at the state level. So really elevating that kind of piece of it as something that the council might be able to influence, but not to say that there wouldn't be other conversations about the ability to utilize incentives or support. And you've done that over the last three months even, different projects that would be coming forward with affordable units at lower AMI. So that doesn't, isn't to negate your concern, but my recollection of the conversation was we were elevating the top three out of, I don't even know, a hundred and fifty different tactics and goals as something that would be valuable for what Ms. Einhauser represented, but also because it has unique challenges to it in the Rochester market that doesn't have as many tools in the toolbox to be able to address through existing programs.
I think whether it's the word that's triggering or making you bring up these concerns or whatever it is, the sentiment is so important because we can't be successful in all these projects, whether city driven or DMC or Mayo, whoever's guiding them, without a focus on supporting the people who live and work here or who need to come to live and work here. And that's going to take all of us as a community working together to do so. So thanks for bringing that up. Anything else before?
Anything else before we move on to the next person?
No, just thank you. Thank you very much. I'm, this is indeed very exciting. Loving the built environment like I do. I can't wait to see this done. I have every bit of trust in Mayo and that this will be completed well. I hope the construction phases are not so, so disruptive to our community. I begged and pleaded for a year off of construction downtown and I'm clearly not going to get that. But, you know, the end result I hope is going to be lead certified, bird safe glass, meeting water, water MMS four permitting and beyond above and all the other things, green roofs, solar panels, the whole, the whole shebang. So I'm excited to see how that goes. Thank you.
And if I may, I just want to point out that Mayo cannot do all of those things alone either. So regardless of how well we, we, we think that they can pull this off, that requires a bunch of teammates across all of the departments that have been mentioned to be able to deliver, deliver on a reasonable timeframe for all of the permitting regulatory requirements, making sure that the construction routes are going to work, communicating to people how they can get where they're going, making sure that our projects that might be in the way get phased either before or after, so we're not in that space three times. And that is something that Mayo cannot accomplish regardless of how much we have faith in them, unless we're also have our teammates there supporting that in a way that works well for the community.
I, I agree. Thank you.
Councilmember Palmer.
Thank you. You know, I'm excited about the opportunity that we have coming up. You know, Mr. Keen said comes along, a project comes along. I want to point out, we're really building on an investment in this community that's taken a long, long period of time. Yet our investment and DMC investment is is paying off, our Mayo Clinic investment is paying off, our sales tax extension is paying off. You know, our investment in public safety, you know, we have a phenomenally great fire department and police department. Our roads are good. So this is just building on what we've already invested in and and this is kind of the fruit of of what we planted. And, and, you know, we come, you know, city councils from, from forty years ago started this whole episode, moving down. I will say, we did have a survey done and I do think that the survey points out good things, but it also pointed out when we did a similar survey that ninety-two percent of people thought that their garbage service was good. So, you know, I mean, there's always room for improvement. Also, the thing in that survey, when you read it, is look at people who have been here for more than ten years and people who have been here for less than ten years. People who have been here for less than ten years think Rochester's a phenomenal city and moving ahead. And people who have been here longer than ten years think Rochester's always been a good city. So I'm excited about the opportunities. This is, this is an investment. I have faith that this will move ahead and twenty years from now, when I'm walking down Broadway, I'll be happy to say, yep. You know, I, I kind of heard about it. So thank you.
All right, Councilmember Bransford.
So can I, I want to touch on a couple of things here. First, first of all, to pull this off, when staff comes and asks us for stuff to pull it off, I think we better understand that in order to pull it off, we should listen because that's going to be a very integral part to us being successful. But can, can we pull up slide, I guess in my PDF, it's sixty-seven. It's the picture of the downtown waterfront southeast master plan.
Sure.
I think that's, that's an important project to look at from a systems perspective.
I'm trying to get it up there, sorry. Oh, it went down.
So what I find interesting about this in particular is it's a very large area. But if you look at it, you have an, or we have an opportunity to do exactly what I think, Kelly, you were talking about in terms of being able to figure out how to have affordable housing, like fifty percent here says affordable. And the reason for that is is the really nice mix. It's almost like a pocket neighborhood that has this very large distribution of single family homes to buy, four, eight, twelve plexes, apartment buildings. It's like a little mini city, right? And I think we could shrink that down and use that same model because this is very much a model I see when I've been in Des Moines recently, where you have these little pocket neighborhoods, where you have exactly that, but shrunk down, maybe not with the big apartment buildings, but with the four, the twelve, the eight plex buildings, the buildings for sale. We, we, I think it's great to build and go vertical along Second Street. We need that. But we also need to start thinking about ways to reimagine around downtown, things like this, but on a maybe smaller scale. It's really important. I think the UDC will help us get there. So tie that and put that all together is I, I think we can get there with affordable housing. If we have developments that look like this, we might have developers that say, you know what? I can subsidize a little bit because the economics of scale is going to give me the profit. And now let's have some housing for sixty, eighty percent AMI. And if we partner with the city, you know, they, you know, there could be a win win here. If, if, so this is one of the things that I've thought a lot about from a systems perspective about this master plan in the southeast on the waterfront. So we can, we can recreate this kind of housing pretty much anywhere. Kind of like the fifty-fifth street when we wanted more R one and they said, no, or more R three, said, no, R one. And I thought about that over time and I'm like, well, you know, that, that's why, right here is an example of why we made that decision, right? So I'm, I'm super excited that we'll be able to, I think we will be able to execute and it's just going to take a big team effort. All right. And it's really fun to be a part of it. So thanks.
Councilmember Dennis. All right, thank you. So Ms. Einhauser, I just want to say that your, your presentation was inspiring and visionary. I think the world needs more people who uplift and see things so positively. So I just want to thank you for, for all the work you put into this. I also, Brooke mentioned her significant strength, a few minutes ago. One of my top significant strengths in our studies we've done is empathy. So what, looking through that lens is how I see, I look through the lens of empathy through my life. What jumped out about with this presentation was when you said recognizing that like the barriers, making sure the gaps are being filled, making sure that no one is left behind. And I feel is what Councilmember Kirkpatrick, Kirkpatrick has said too, when it comes to housing, it's not just building the homes and, oh, man, we need to make sure that this, this, this pyramid, you know, isn't part of the presentation too with, with, you know, being a huge focus. Build, build, build homes, but then keep them affordable and keep them where people can live in them. Because I think that is when you see a town like this where this population's increasing, you have so much money coming in, property prices are going to go up and taxes are going to go up. And we're going to, I believe, out price people who are the essential workers in our city. I live, I have a couple of questions here, but I live from firsthand lived experience. The years I worked for Rochester Public School District as special education para, I took home full time sixteen thousand a year. Sixteen thousand a year is what special education paras work, make full time, full time. One of, and I, I'm a kind of biased, but I think education educators who create all the professions that we have, teachers are so important that we have and they have houses to live in. So we need to make sure we have a lot of houses for people who make sixteen thousand full time a year to afford to live. Because if we're going to increase our population, we're going to increase our children, our education, all, all essential workers. But so my question is, what, mentioned a little bit when talking, answering other questions, to keep, to make sure that once affordable housing, that the incentives continue to stay for decades and decades and decades to come so that people aren't moved out of their homes.
How do we make sure those incentives stay at the question?
So. Not affording.
Yeah. So if I'm, if I'm quoting city attorney Michael Spindler correctly, like you, you can't obligate future councils, right? But what I think for us, for us, how do we, how do we inform future councils to continue to support those kinds of dollars? Is by demonstrating and delivering on projects and sharing the performance measures around them, right? So if we say X project required this kind of, let's, you know, we do TIF financing as a, as a gap filler for projects, right? And so on this project, it delivered X number of affordable units and it had a hundred percent occupancy and it stayed occupied. And showing how the investing, making that TIP investment leveraged not only, you know, X amount of millions of dollars in a project that contributed to the tax base, but also kept that pool of units in the market, right? So how do you, how do you get commitment for future years? It's by being able to look back and say really great projects that got, that got some incentives. Does that council determine, yeah, those incentives weren't worth it, were worth it, it's worth us continuing this policy, this program that's working there. Or I've worked in communities where we've done assistance programs where it's like, you know, it really didn't live up to our expectations. So we sunsetted it and we kept the ones alive that really delivered, right? Like we know this project, this incentive program will deliver us X number of units for every dollar that we subsidize. At this one, it fell short of that. And so it's, it's really, I think, understanding what you get in a deliverable with the, the assistance that you decide to provide on a project. And, and that's, that's a decision really for future councils to decide, this is still our priority. This is still our policy agenda and so we're going to commit dollars towards it. But I mean, I can't sit here and tell you that a council ten years from now should stick, commit to X number of dollars for affordable housing if they say, no, we really need to just focus on mobility. And so we're going to redirect those dollars for mobility. And probably not much want to hear, but that's, that's.
I think you've touched on something though. So the other side of that is not necessarily just the housing staying at that affordable rate. But the other, when you didn't show this here because it's, we probably, we can't show everything in one presentation because this is more about like the built environment and the number of projects that are physically going to be delivered. But there's a lot of work happening, not just in the housing space, but economic mobility, right? So some of the ways is that we're not necessarily just looking to have someone stay in an affordable house for their entire life, but have the ability to perhaps capitalize on some amount of the investment that they've made going to their next home that they, that they own that maybe is slightly higher and also having more access to opportunities in the workforce, whether that's construction, trades, other types of workforce opportunities. And so some of those other social fabric ideas, and I think that connects to a little bit to what Councilmember Kirkpatrick and Councilmember Bransford were saying. But like, how do we support and influence those things in the way where maybe, you know, we're not like a workforce center, but we have workforce development that we're partnering with to do a significant amount of work in hopes that they will continue that work after the catal, you know, the catalyzation of building the system with the, the grant dollars. And so there's kind of multiple ways to come at that issue of affordability and, and household income and access to care and things like that. So I do think those are the kinds of things that we're looking for feedback on is, and that may not be that that's a city teammate. That may be that we have a partner that's really good at that and we think they're going to become really pressured or important for a period of time in order to be able to deliver all of these projects, whether that's three years, five years, we have more work to do. But I guess I would kind of come at it from that dual point of view.
Yeah, that's a really great point.
And then my, another question kind of, it's similar to that, is like when I go door to door to residents who don't know how they're going to afford their rent. I mean, there's incredible struggling people here in Rochester and Ward Six and all throughout the city who, when I talk to them, I connect, ask them some of their thoughts and trying to get, you know, first ground grassroots public input. One thing that many people say is even though they love, and I included, love what Mayo Clinic does, life saving, phenomenal institution. People across, so many, many people have used the word one horse town. And they say, well, we are just a one horse town. And, and I think that's where small business owners who also have been struggling to pay their property, their taxes as, you know, property rates go up. This is going to make the one horse town very much, I would, I'm quoting many residents who have even more of a one horse town when you have five billion dollars coming in. So to protect not just historical buildings, not just, you know, housing, but other businesses. I mean, what is being, going to be done to make sure that, that we have a diversification of our economy? There is not just high tech jobs, but jobs that, that people from all walks of life, all towns, all skill sets and strengths can, you know, be involved in so they can pay their bills, so they can be part of the community, you know, have mental health, have connection and not feel like they're just, you know, second to some, you know, the giants in our community.
Yeah, no, thank you for the question. And I guess let me first begin by saying, I, I think this does anything but make us a one horse town, right? What we have seen in the last few years in terms of the biosciences growth as a result of innovative businesses want to be here because they are, they know that they have access to the best, best healthcare system in the United States. And what this five billion dollar investment, the Unbound project, I think it's just going to explode that kind of opportunity, right? So when we talk about what could this lead to, what does this transformation lead to? You think about the related commerce that can happen as a result of this kind of investment in a healthcare campus, right? So whether it's biosciences, UMR is, you know, in conversations right now. And what does their plan look like? What does their campus look like? And it's in direct response to this growing bioscience and medical industry. So there's lots of really great data about when you see this kind of investment and how it becomes an economic driver for other kinds of, yes, related industries, but that's important. It's related industries and it, I think it expands your diversity in your community and it helps you. I mean, how many communities can say their number one, their top record year coming out of global pandemic was the very next year out of a global pandemic, right? And that, that is a testament to kind of the economic stability, I think, that happens when you think about leveraging something like what Mayo's doing here and the opportunity it creates for business innovation. But then to your point about how do you take care of the mom and pop, right? How do you take care of, and I think we learned a lot from our downtown task force work. I know I have done a number of those in my time in local government over the past thirty years. And I felt an energy and a synergy with our partners about, you know, really responding to what we heard in those first ninety days from the local businesses and we activated a plan. We came up with four key themes and we owned those themes or we, so we led or supported or influenced, right? And that's what we were talking about a little bit earlier in, in this work. And so the lessons that we have from the downtown task force and what happened as a result of that, whether it's RDA doing, the kind of activation to support local businesses, whether it's the work of the clerk's office to improve and streamline the permitting process or the cost of doing business feels different and it's more efficient, whether it's experienced Rochester coming up with innovative things like Restaurant Week, right? So it is, I talk about it's people planning, partnering, performing, right? So who are the people at the table ready to tackle the challenge or opportunity? How do we partner together? What's our plan? And what's not a plan that's on a shelf, but how do we come together and we activate that plan? And then let's check back and how are we performing? Do we do what we say we wanted to do? Do we need to iterate? And I always like to add the final P because I feel particularly passionate about this, but it's passion. You have to have a passion for this work. And you, we have that passion in our city teammates, in our partners who wake up and say, what are we going to do for a business forward strategy while we are under construction? When we are trying to bury utilities in the same space that Unbound needs a space, that a, a multifamily housing project needs a space? Like, how are we going to think about the business forward strategy so no one gets left behind? How are you going to communicate? So, and it's not just in the downtown area, right? What happens downtown has community impact. I, I don't live downtown. I live in the northwest, but I come downtown every day. So I come a certain way, I come on different roads so I can just stand top of how our road infrastructure looks like and things that I might see, right? That's going to be the hundred and twenty-one thousand people that live here and the three million people or more that come to visit. So what I really appreciate is a team that thinks about the tools that we have like Business Ford, the importance of engaging early in design, engaging early in communicating, and most of all iterating, and I can't underscore that enough, like iterating the problem, iterating the solution so that it really responds to what we heard as the challenge or the opportunity. So it's, do we have the systems in place? Do we have the relationships in place to say like, you know what? We can agree to disagree, but you know what? We all know this is the outcome we're here for. And so it rises above whatever disagreement we have. And that's what you have to have and that's what we have. So we don't necessarily have solutions right now. So we don't necessarily have solutions right now to tell you, here's how we are going to make sure that that downtown business is not going to be harmed. But I can guarantee that we're going to listen, we're going to try and react in the way that we think is most appropriate, that that at the end of the day, not only do we have five to $7 billion investment, some really great projects, but we have a living, active downtown and a living and active community.
Wonderful. And my last question is really short, so about the survey, but thank you. I we need public trust, I think, too, is a huge thing, is make sure that people know that they are protected. So but my last question is about the survey. Definitely would love it resent. Was this the same survey? And I know the survey results were not very positive about staff, you know, thoughts on working for the city and things. The survey that was presented at the strategic planning meeting that we had on February 27 at the Plumber House, that strategic plan, that was when in the council packet was the community survey. Was that the same survey as you're talking about, the one, the meeting that was not videoed or recorded, but we had our strategic planning session determining our priorities and funding for the, I don't, it's a million dollars.
It presented in chambers at some point in early 2023, the survey results.
I think you're talking about the the staff engagement survey, and we've, it wasn't super negative, but there were concerns from teammates in certain spaces about frankly, burnout and overwork and some of the things that we're talking about here, making sure that they're valued, wanting to make sure that from a pay perspective, that the work that they are doing is of value. So the community survey that was referenced here was the community and business survey that went out in 2022, but we continue to do engagement surveys internally, poll surveys, et cetera, which is really more about and distributes, I mean, obviously, the point in time survey. So sometimes there's more stress or less stress, those kinds of things, and continue to engage our teammates and making sure that we co-create a an opportunity for people to feel valued and feel supported and make sure that they feel like they have the resources, they need to get their jobs done.
I agree. That would be nice.
With that, we will wrap up. But Ms. Steinhauser, thank you for this inspirational presentation and look forward to our next conversation on February. And again, it's a team effort. This isn't Cindy, this was Mr. Zounds, Deputy Minister of Paris, and many other people that contribute to this.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
The whole team.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, quick run through of our study session schedule, Administrator Zounds, and then I'll turn it over to Mr. Spindler Craig to adjourn us.
Shoot, I always forget about my calendar.
We haven't done it in a while. All right, so you are on your new schedule, and so your next study session is on January 29. There's there is some potential that we would see some some other items pop up there, but primarily the focus would be on sort of reestablishing information about our action plan and having the update. We do have a new teammate, well, a new new and renewed to us teammate that's working on that. And so we would like to get some feedback on that and just provide kind of where we are, which I think probably dovetails nicely with this meeting, as well as was referenced, the local option sales tax, where we are, what some of the next steps are. And just as a reminder, we're currently still collecting the 2012 local option sales tax. That doesn't flip over until the total amount is collected from from the amount that was authorized in 2012. So the following meeting, we do also have some additional space. We have the Supporting Transformation Part Two, where we'll bring back a little bit more detail to you based on what we heard here today. And then we're currently scheduled to also review the parking rate study recommendations for the updated parking rates that were presented.
Wonderful. All right, Mr. Spindler Craig.
Thank you, Madam President. Council members, this is the type of closed session that does not require a formal motion to move into, but I do need to make a record while you are still here. We will be adjourning into a closed session pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section 13D.05, Subdivision 3B, for a confidential attorney client discussion regarding certain aspects of the draft campaign camping ordinance approved by council in November of 2023 and legal action threatened against the city by Southern Minnesota Regional Legal Services in a letter dated November 20, 2023, on behalf of unnamed individuals who may be impacted by the ordinance. In order for legal counsel to provide candid advice and assess and discuss the risk of potential legal liability without jeopardizing the city's defenses, that discussion requires absolute confidentiality. To that point, I will be with you in the closed session as well as the LM CIT-appointed counsel, Justin Templon.
Thank you. So we'll convene in at 6:10 in 104?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much.